Good evening and welcome to our February 8th Atrium Entertainment. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize our board members. Please hold your applause. Board President from District 13, Ms. Robin Mullet. Board Vice President, District 3, Mr. Mike Dermon. District 1, Mr. Neil Henigan. District 2, Ms. Beth Heinz. District 4, Mr. Jack Loop. District 6, Mr. Michael Nation. District 7, Mr. Willie Jeter. District 10, Mr. Ron Bentoncourt. And District 14, Mr. Dennis Kuzan. Please also help me welcome Superintendent Mr. Trey Fols. Associate Superintendent Mr. Peter Javia. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Regina Sanford. And Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mike Cosay. I call your attention to the artwork displayed in the atrium. Students from Whispering Forest and Alton Elementary Schools, in honor of African-American History Month, learned about African-American art, from the earliest cultural practice of African tribal masks, to artists like Clementine Hunter, known for her zineas in a pot and African houses, and Romare Bearden, known for his block collages. You will see elements of these in the works of our kindergarten through 3rd grade students from Alton Elementary. You will also see a portrait of Dr. Martin Luther King and of Louis Armstrong. Their art teacher is Ms. Virginia Scherls. For your entertainment tonight, we have students from Ponchartrain Elementary, Woodlake Elementary, and Chafunkta Middle School performing several pieces highlighting strings instruments. Please refer to your program to follow along. The students are under the direction of Strings Teacher Annie Bridges. And of course, we will end with a little fun by Fountain Blue High School Trumpeter Lee Lambert.
I'd like to present to you just a small sample of our excellent Suzuki string students from Ponchartrain and Woodlake Elementary. We're going to start with a Little Twinkle variation, which is like a leading into Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. You'll see some students are pre-twinklers, and they're just playing the plain strings with no fingers. When the students are playing with their fingers, they're true twinklers. So we welcome our twinklers, our pre-twinklers, and then we'll have one extra song for our even more twinkly ones. One, two, three, go.
Next, we're going to have our Chafunkta Middle School come back on for our fiddle section. So this is a bunch of superstrings, and they meet before school. They're very dedicated players. We also have orchestra at school once a week, but we do it a little bit extra because they want to do extra. They really want to play. So we're going to play some songs for you now, and I'd like to invite two elementary students to play with us who know this song also. So the girls come up front. Go in between the stands up there. So we have Julia and also Sarah from our elementary schools. Can you see? Play "Boil the Cabbages." And this is where we're also going to have our bass player. Play the upright bass. And we're going to have a guitar player. We've invited Lee Lambert to come join us. And Lee and I have known a long time, we've known each other a long time. He was in my obita groups several years ago, so I'm very happy to have us all together. Are you ready? Kick it off, Zelli. Next, we'll feature two duets from Zelli and Suzanne. Our student who played allegro is sick with the flu, and she really wanted to be here, but maybe you'll get to hear her another time. So they're going to play, first they're going to play "The Year of Jubilo" and then they're going to play "Cripple Creek." Next, we're going to feature our Irish dancer Avery with the Kes jig, and then, and then, the Swallow Tail jig.
One, two, three. Let's take a bow. Ready, set, go. Take a bow. All right, very good job. Let's give them another hand, please. Congratulations. And I'd like to also thank again Ms. Annie Bridges. I'd also like to recognize the parents, because you can see it definitely takes a lot of parent support. So thank you, parents. Thank you, Mr. Lee Lambert, for his special... And I also want to say thank you to the Board and Superintendent Fols for enabling us to have this tremendous program in our school system. So thank you. That's it for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining me tonight for our February 8th Board Meeting. Could we have a roll call, please, Ms. Coakley?
Mrs. Mullet?
Present.
Mr. Henigan? Ms. Heinz? Mr. Dermon? Mr. Loop? Mr. Harrell? Mr. Nation? Mr. Jeter? Mrs. Sealy? Mrs. Drucker? Mr. Bentoncourt? Mr. Womack?
I believe he is here.
Mr. Hershey? Mr. Kuzan? Mrs. Bellisario?
Thank you, Mrs. Coakley. Would you all please stand and join me as Mr. Jeter says the invocation and leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed to give up all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support personnel. We ask that you bless us abundantly and continue to allow us to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decision that we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust in us and their confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all the things that we do. The blessings that we ask for, the prayers that we say, we in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Yes, and Mr. Womack, yes. School Board members, do you have any visitors that you would like to recognize tonight? Okay, we're going to move on. We have our Superintendent Inspiration Award. Superintendent Fols, all yours.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet.
Hello, Ms. Mullet and Board members. This past year, we started a new tradition of honoring our outstanding alumni with the Superintendent's Inspiration Award. You may remember that our first recipient was Michael Maude of the New Orleans Saints. Tonight, I want to share with you another inspirational story, that of current Washington Nationals and former LSU player Cole Freeman. Cole is a graduate of Lake Shore High School, where he also played baseball, but he has not had the typical journey of an athlete. Tonight, we are honoring Cole for what he has done off the baseball field, as well as what he does on the field. Let's take a look at Cole's story.
Lake Shore High graduate and all-time LSU baseball great Cole Freeman has inspired people not only with his outstanding athletic ability, but also with an attitude that nothing is impossible.
You step out there and you think of somebody that's better than you, then, you know, how are you really going to compete with that? And I think that's just kind of something that's been stuck in my mind since I started playing.
And that perspective has helped Freeman be a leader in his lifetime of playing ball that included Lake Shore High, LSU, and now in the Washington Nationals organization.
Oh, he was a great leader for the team. You know, he was a guy that was always first to the field, last to leave. He was just a great kid who, the word "no" never came out of his mouth. He was always there, ready to do whatever was asked of him.
And the secret to his success? Playing with heart. As Freeman believes and promotes, "heart has no limit," a phrase that he coined as a sophomore and is now synonymous with Cole Freeman.
And next thing you know, I'm coming out midway through the season, little kids have HHNL on their gloves. Some kids are making shirts, "heart has no limit."
And Coach Rivero believes that Freeman is the perfect person to inspire others with his message.
He's a tremendous role model. When we retired his number at Lake Shore, you know, tons of people from the community, people I hadn't seen in years, came out to honor him. He's a very humble kid, you know, people look up to him, and he takes that responsibility very seriously.
A humble leader who was told early on that his success would be limited due to his size.
Yeah, when I go out there, I'm not thinking at all about my size. I'm thinking about my ability. I'm thinking every time I step on the field that I'm the best player out there, and I think that's how everybody has to take their mentality.
But this "heart has no limit" message transcends baseball.
Yeah, you can tie that to everything, not just athletics, you know, whether it be education, whether it be friendships, whether it be doing what you're supposed to do, all that goes into it. So he's just somebody that's easy to like, and certainly somebody that Saint Tanner Parish Public Schools does him extremely proud of.
I think everybody in their life has been told they couldn't do something, couldn't be, you know, an artist, couldn't be a musician, you know, couldn't graduate high school. Motivation is one of the biggest factors in getting things done. Obviously, when you get a motivated kid, I mean, watch out because they can do anything they want.
And this motivated kid from Mandeville, Louisiana, has proven just that. Grant Yenney, Channel 13.
Tonight, I want to introduce you all to Cole Freeman, along with his family. His mom is here, his sister's here, his dad is here, and I know he'd want me to recognize Principal as well. I think Christian Munson's here, and his two, Christian's two children are wearing the "Heart Has No Limit" t-shirt, so they're representing tonight as well. Stand up, y'all. They got the shirts on, they got it going on, so. As you heard, Cole returned home last September to be the first athlete in the history of Lake Shore High to have his jersey retired. He was part of the school's first varsity, first ever varsity. first ever varsity baseball team. He certainly represents our school system in the best way possible on and off the field, and he is an inspiration for our student athletes that dreams can indeed come true, no matter your size. We should all remember that "heart has no limit." That's why I wanted to invite him here tonight to be recognized by our school system with the superintendent's inspiration award. Cole, calling up, please. On behalf of our school system, I want to thank you for the work you're doing with your "Heart Has No Limit" campaign and for inspiring kids throughout St. Tammany Parish and across the country. I have this certificate for you that I want to read. It says, "Presented to Cole Freeman in honor of the positive impact you have made throughout your meaningful 'Heart Has No Limit' campaign and your success on and off the baseball field. The St. Tammany Parish Public School System salute your accomplishments as an outstanding alumnus of Lake Shore High School and the St. Tammany Parish Public School System."
Thank you all. First off, wow, on that video, I had the chills. I mean, that was unbelievable. Secondly, I'd like to say I thank the school board, Trey Fols, for, you know, allowing me to receive this award. Lastly, this award, I think, really speaks volume to my parents. I mean, it shows what a young man they've raised, and, you know, just the type of person that I am reflects the type of people that they are. And, you know, obviously, where I am today, I'm nowhere close without them, and I just wanted to say, you know, tell them thank you and how much I love them, and thank you again, everybody.
Cole, on behalf of this school board, I would like to say thank you. It's an honor that we have you to not only inspire our students, but inspire everyone in this room and everyone in this parish. And what a beautiful gift that you just gave your mom and dad. Just beautiful. Thank you very much. Board members, do we have any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Fols. Next, we have a special presentation by Mr. Jabbi. Mr. Jabbi, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Appreciate it, board members. I want to just take this opportunity to thank each of you as board members for your service that you give to our school system, to our community, to our students. And a special thank you and a special honor goes out tonight to Mr. Ron Bentoncourt, who has reached his 15th year with the school. And you get your pen tonight, Ms. Bentoncourt. Mr. Bentoncourt, so congratulations. We thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mullet.
Thank you, Mr. Jabbi. Any words, Mr. Bentoncourt?
Yeah, I never seem to be at a loss for words.
I figured I'd give you.
No, I just hope somewhere along the line I've maybe done a little something to help this school system, but it's really hard to outdo this amazing staff and the superintendent and stuff. See, y'all do such a great job. I'm just honored to be a small, teeny-winnie part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentoncourt. Okay, we're going to move on to our public comments. And tonight, the first, for five minutes, we have Mr. Bruce Clement, and so I'd like to recognize him and give him five minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent, administrators, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Bruce Clement. I'm a resident of Slidell, and I have, I am proud to tell you that I've received an education from the St. Tammany Parish School System, attended LSU for two football seasons, that's all I can remember, then summarily went to Northeast Louisiana University where I received a pharmacy degree, came back to St. Tammany Parish to work, and then went on to receive a master's degree to work for Slidell Memorial Hospital, and then moved into senior management as a chief operating officer. Retired last week after 33 years of service. Very, it was a very happy, it was a bittersweet day, but a day where I could walk away and say, I feel like I made a small difference in bringing that organization forward. Much like the job that you all do as school board members, not everybody recognizes the fact that what volunteer service is all about and how strenuous it is and what a difficult challenge it is. Although I've had the opportunity, I've been richly blessed in my life to be able to participate in many activities as chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, president of the Ozone Camellia Club, chairman of the East St. Tammany Heart Walk, on and on and on, too many of them to remember tonight. I will say, though, that in my younger years, when I was called to address this august body of school administrators, it was typically under very different circumstances. But tonight, I am pleased to tell you that I am a candidate for mayor for the city of Slidell. My vision for Slidell is that one of rebirth, one of regeneration, and we're going to take an opportunity to bring more businesses, to continue to do the good work that our schools are doing now with your help, and for my leadership to be able to help us move to the next level. The ability to change a culture of a city is very difficult. It was also very difficult to change a culture of a hospital after 30, 33 years, but we were able to do that. And I believe that with the skills that I have learned, I will be able to take us to the next level. I'm no stranger to working with the St. Tammany Parish School System. You see, about 20 years ago, I had the opportunity to work with the curriculum department where we created the Academies Program, and we were the first organization that volunteered. We stepped up. I was the, one of the point persons on the group to be able to start that program. Proud to tell you that on any given time, we can have between 150 and 200 students at Slidell High and the other high schools in town participating in the Academies Program. It gives children an opportunity to look at potential career opportunities, and we are very proud of that affiliation with the St. Tammany Parish School Board. So, I will leave you tonight by saying that I appreciate the opportunity. It is an honor to address you. I look forward to my next challenge, and if I am successful, I will come back and speak with you all again. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Clements, and good luck. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda for public comments, we have Ann Ogden. Is she here? Okay. Good evening. And just state your name and where you live. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that before.
Sure. My name is Ann Ogden, and I live in Covington, and I want to thank you guys very much for allowing me to speak today. Hopefully, you guys have all heard from me because I sent all of you guys an email before about our French immersion program that the parents of St. Tammany are trying to get going here. And I want to come before you, first of all, as a parent of a little girl that's about to start kindergarten, and understanding that you guys already have the best school system in Louisiana, and there's no doubt about that, and we just want to improve it a little bit more by adding a French immersion program. So, today, we're honored to serve you guys with a petition that I already emailed to Dr. Sanford and that you guys should be getting a copy that hopefully you guys all have. There's a law in Louisiana called the Immersion School Choice Law that allows school boards to create immersion schools, and there's a couple ways to do it, and one of the ways to do it is by petition from parents. So, if parents bring a petition that has at least 25 children either in kindergarten or first grade that say they want to go to an immersion program in that school board before March 1st of the prior academic year, then the school board shall create that program. And we've been able to create that. Very, very proud to say we have a huge support of parents already in St. Tammany. As a matter of fact, we have a bunch of them with us, so if they can wave their little French flags to show you that they've come out to support this cause today. So, this law, and again, I'm not going to read from this. You guys can take a look at this at your leisure and enjoy the statutory language. But basically, it says if there are 25 students either in kindergarten or first grade, that we can invoke this, excuse me, provision, and we were able to get 36 kindergarteners who were committed to going into foreign immersion program for next year and 27 first graders. We also have 121 parents total, or 121 children represented in the petition because we allowed people who were younger than that age to sign just to show you that there'd be future interest. If you were to start this program, additional people would come. Of course, I want to acknowledge that I am by no means the school board, and that the sampling which we've been able to bring is small by, I'm sure, than, you know, if you guys were to actually ask people if they were willing to commit to a program like this. So, I want you guys to just be aware of this, and if you have any questions, we have some great support out there. Besides a great parent network that's already been started, we have the Department of Education, Louisiana Department of Education. Michelle Brou is the head of the World Immersion Program, and she has been helpful to me through this, this effort, and she's available for questions or comments. Louisiana has also created the Center for the Development of Foreign Language, or the French in Louisiana, I'm sorry, called CODIFIL, and the contact there is Jean Robert Frigale. Those contact information is attached here in this, as well as in the email that I sent to you previously. They have implemented these programs from get-go throughout 23 parishes, I believe, in Louisiana, and have educated almost 100,000 students in Louisiana in other parishes. So, they can answer the questions about where does the funding come from, where can we get the money to implement this, where are the books, are they available, do we have to translate things? They have all of these expertises that you can rely on to help guide this from an idea to actually implementing. Obviously, the theory is to actually implement in a school that's already existing, and I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions that you may have. I'm here and available to answer any questions that I can as a layperson, and I'm certainly willing to do that, and then, of course, pointing you to those experts that we have. We also have support from, you know, schools that we've talked to, parents. The French consulate has programs to support things like this, as well as Representative Falconer, who is a big fan of the French language. So, thank you guys very much for your time today, and I appreciate it, and let me know if you need anything else from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Ogden, for joining us tonight and giving us all this information. I do know all my board members have, I didn't realize you gave them the email. I also sent that, so we have all of that, and if they have any questions, they will contact you. And of course, you've given all that information to Dr. Sanford as well. So, we appreciate that, and we appreciate all the parents for coming out tonight as well.
Thank you. She has a fuller digital copy of the petition responses to share with you all, and you have them very microscopic if you have a magnifying glass.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. We had no one for three minutes, so we're going to move on to our agenda items, and that we're going to start with approval of the minutes for the special meeting held January 8th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Okay, that was made by Mr. Kuzan. That was seconded by Mrs. Sealy. Do we have any comments or questions from board members on that? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held January 11th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jeter? Okay, seconded by Mr. Loop. Any questions or comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Any extensions? Mrs. Bellisario for an extension? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item C, appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to January 11th, 2018. Mr. Jabbi?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Bobby L. Cox, Pineview Middle, 27.50 years, 2.50 years in St. Tammany Parish.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Heinz and seconded by Mr. Durman, correct? Okay. Comments, questions from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to January 11th, 2018. Mr. Jabbi?
Thank you. Joanne L. Kidder, Clearwood Junior High, 20.33 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Carmella D. Cumberell, Information Technology, 32.17 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Pamela A. Leach, Information Technology, 25.88 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Crystal P. Weaver, Magnolia Trace Elementary, 10.65 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Marcia S. Biancini, Mandeville Junior High, 10.91 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Peggy S. Hingle, Transportation Center, 26.59 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Carl A. Hodge, Transportation Center, 25.23 years, all in St. Tammany Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Jabbi. Mrs. Sealy, did you make that motion? Okay. Mr. Bentoncourt seconded that. Any comments or questions from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Jabbi. Next, we have approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for Human Resources Education held February 1st. Mrs. Heinz?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. We did meet on February 1st. We have the following recommendation. Recommend approval of revisions to the food service, school food services job descriptions.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept that? Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Loop, go ahead.
I second the motion.
And Mr. Jeter seconded that? Okay. Comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? So ordered.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. Appreciate that. Next, we have approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for Business Affairs Administration, Administrative, held February 1st. Mr. Nation?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings two recommendations before the board tonight. One is, the first is to recommend acceptance of grade reconfiguration for Madisonville Junior High School, 7th and 8th grades, and Lancaster Elementary School, 3rd through 6th grades, and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Nation. Mr. Durman, you seconded that motion? Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Yes, Mrs. Heinz?
I'd just like to make the comment that when we began planning for Lancaster Elementary, well, it wasn't really Lancaster Elementary at that time. We talked about an elementary school in Madisonville, and we met with the public. We had talked about starting a new kindergarten through 5th grade school in Madisonville, and we found out that the community preferred to have all of their students stay together, so we did a reconfiguration of Madisonville Elementary School, then the students would move to Lancaster and then on to the junior high school, and it's really served us well with our growth there. We've had to do some adjustment of the grades there, but I think it's been cohesive for the community. So, this is another change in that area, but I think it will be a good, good move, and I just thought I'd throw in that little bit of history.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. Any other comments from board, excuse me, board members? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
All right, and our second and final recommendation tonight is to accept the Lake Shore Villages property land swap.
Okay, Mr. Hershey makes that motion, and Mr. Kuzan's going to second that one? Any comments or questions from board members? Mr. Jabbi?
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Mullet. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board members that we did put a map in your packet tonight where you could see the existing property and the proposed swap, and we've worked, we're working with the developers and can assure you that the elevation of this property is going to be just as good or better, and they will help us and assist us in doing that.
Mr. Durman?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Mr. Jabbi, if you could maybe just run real quickly over the swap and what it really consists of so that everybody's aware of it. I know it came out of committee, but I'm just saying.
Yes, sir. The swap involved, we, this board purchased after Hurricane Katrina, 10 acres out at Lake Shore Villages. Lake Shore Villages property, and new developers have come in. I think it's Mr. Horton, his well-known developer, and so they're, they're getting after it and getting ready to get started, and there's going to be quite a number of homes out in this area. There's a water feature that they want to put in, in the form of a pond or a lake, and it happens to be where the existing property now stands. So they've asked to do a swap where our 10 acres, they would give us 12 acres. It's very close to where we were already. It's in, it's about middle ways of the development, so a real good location. It's going to be next to a sports park, which our students will be able to take advantage of that. So there's no additional monies involved. It's an actual swap. We think it's a win-win. We're getting 12 for 10, and we've had it valued, and we're not losing any money in this deal. In fact, we're probably gaining some money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nation. Okay, next, we have certification of board members. Neil M. Henigan, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Loop III, Charles T. Harold, Michael C. Nation, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Sealy, Sharon Lo Drucker, Ronald Ron Bettencourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, Richard Ricky Hershey Jr., Robin P. Muller, Dennis S. Kuzan, and Mary Kay Bellisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2018 presented on February 1st, 2018, as mandated by the Louisiana Revised Statute 17:53. Remarks? Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Muller. I do indeed certify that the board members you named in item G did complete the training as requested and mandated.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, this brings me to the announcements. We would like to thank the students of Wispings Forest Elementary and Alton Elementary for the beautiful artwork honoring African-American History Month that will be, that is displayed this month in the atrium. Their teacher is Ms. Jenny Schules. We would like to thank the students of Ponchatrain Elementary, Woodlake Elementary, Trafuncta Middle, and Fountain Blue High School for their string performance tonight, and it was fabulous, wasn't it? Their string teacher is Ms. Annie Bridges, and, well, I know everyone's going to love this one. Schools will be closed February 12th through the 16th for the Mardi Gras holidays. Stay dry and safe. Central office sites will be closed February, February 12th and 13th for the Mardi Gras holidays, and the next committee as a whole meeting will be Thursday, March 8th, and that's a week later because we will, LSBA has their convention, and that will start at 6:00 PM, so note that time. Seeing no further, do I, do I need to go to an executive session now, or is that a, that's a?
No, we can go into executive session.
From here? Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I need a motion to go into executive session. That was Mr. Bettencourt?
Right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hershey seconded that. Do I have any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor of going into an executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Ordered, we're going to do a five-minute recess, and then we will come back. Thank you very much, and everyone have a great night and a great holiday.